I'd like to call the City Wheat Ridge Plan Commission for November sixth, two thousand and fourteen order. Can I get real call of members, please?
Ann Brinkman absent, Emory Dorsey, Donna Kimzy, Scott Ohm.
Here.
Steve Timms is absent, Alan Bucknam.
Present.
Silka Pop is also absent, and Amanda Weaver.
Present.
Thank you.
The next order on the agenda is the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the public, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve the order of the agenda?
I move to approve the order of the agenda.
Can I get a second? Call for vote.
Motion approved. Oh, we only have four. Five to zero.
Is there a motion to approve the order of the minutes for October sixteen, two thousand and fourteen?
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call for vote.
Motion approved, three to zero to two, two abstentions, Bucknam and Weaver.
This is the time for any person to speak on any subject not appearing on tonight's agenda. Has anyone signed up? Okay, we will move on to the the public hearing. Before I continue with the public hearing, I'd like to make one statement. Fellow commissioners, I'd like to make a disclosure that several years ago I was contracted to perform design work for Regency Center projects through a consultant, or the applicant, Mr. Shekel, and simultaneously have had business meetings in reference to the projects. I've had no direct contact with Regency Centers or Mr. Shekel for several years, and knowing that Mr. Shekel and Regency Centers does not affect my ability to be objective on this case. Are there any questions? Thank you. Okay, let's. I open the public hearing for case number WZ dash fourteen dash zero nine. An application filed by Regency Centers LP for approval of a zone change from a commercial one, restricted commercial and neighborhood commercial to planned commercial development, and approval of an outline development plan for property located generally at thirty-four hundred Youngfield Street, also known as the Applewood Village Shopping Center. Could I hear a staff report, please?
Good evening, Meredith Reckert, Wheat Ridge Community Development Department. I am here to present case number WZ fourteen dash oh nine, which is a request for approval of a zone change from neighborhood commercial, restricted commercial, commercial one and planned commercial development to planned commercial development. I'd like to enter into the record the case file and packet materials and the contents of this digital presentation, and then establish jurisdiction. The property has been posted, all correct notification and publication requirements have been met, therefore, Planning Commission does have jurisdiction to hear this case. So before I get started with the nuts and bolts of the case, I'd like to talk just a little bit about our plan development process. This is a process that we modified about two years ago, so it's a little bit different. Our plan development process is actually two steps. The first step is for the zone change and approval of an outline development plan. Typically, the ODP document, which is the first first step, establishes the existing zoning and then also gives sort of a template for a layout of the property. It typically defines landscaping, parking, access points, and then development standards such as setbacks, height restrictions, so on and so forth. There is a neighborhood meeting required prior to the submittal of the ODP and zone change application. Planning Commission in this case will give a recommendation to City Council, who is the final approval on all zone changes. Assuming that this is approved, the second step of the process are the specific development plans and plaits, which focus on the details of a more detailed development, including architecture and landscaping and so on and so forth. New SDP approvals do require a review by Planning Commission, and that is all. And again, no neighborhood meeting required for the SDP submittal. So this is an aerial photo taken in two thousand and twelve. Just to help orient you, north is to the top, and what you're seeing in color there is the the limits of the Applewood Village Shopping Center. As I indicated, the zoning on the property is NC, RC, C one, and planned commercial development. The location is, again, the Applewood Village Shopping Center, which is in the very western portion of the city. It has about thirty-five acres and is adjacent to I seventy on the west, Thirty-Eighth Avenue on the north, Thirty-Second Avenue on the south, and then to the east, we've got some residential neighborhoods. Again, you can see Thirty-Eighth Avenue up here at the top, Youngfield over on this side with I seventy beyond, and then Thirty-Second Avenue on the south. It is the intent of this application to incorporate new ownership parcels into the property, consolidate the boundary of the center, and to prepare several existing building pads for new development. The shopping center has actually been in place since the sixties, and I know that the planned development zoning has been in place on certain portions of it for over forty years back, I believe that was approved back initially in the mid seventies. However, we've really never had a concise document that addresses the center as a whole, that establishes the kinds of architecture and building elements that we look for when we look for new development. We've sort of amended the plan from time to time as new development occurred. And again, the intent is that we have an overall zoning document that's going to help us determine and guide new development within the shopping center. So having said that, the shopping center is located in a busy commercial corridor. It does have easy access to I seventy through the Thirty-Second Avenue and Youngfield on and off ramps. Youngfield and both Thirty-Second and Thirty-Eighth Avenue are designated as arterials and carry a fairly heavy vehicle count per day. The location serves both the needs of the immediate neighborhood, but also serves as a regional draw, and it is also a popular stop for travelers going to and from the mountains because they can pull up, unload the bus. People get all their groceries, their liquor, whatever, before they get back on the bus to head up to the mountains, and so like I say, it's a very, it's the city's most, I guess, concise and largest largest commercial center in the city. There is a major interior drive aisle that connects Thirty-Eighth and Thirty-Second Avenue. Neither of these locations are signalized. We also have a major interior drive that comes off Youngfield about at this location. That is a signalized intersection. And let's see, there are also numerous accesses into the individual businesses. So this is another copy of the same aerial we were just looking at. Again, it shows the existing zoning on the property. The property is outlined in red, again, with Thirty-Eighth Avenue to the north up in this location, Thirty-Second Avenue down at the bottom of the slide. And again, the gray area, which covers most of the northern portion and some of the the properties on the south side, does stand for planned commercial development. The red, in this case, which is over in this location adjacent to I seventy, stands for C one. We've also got a pocket of this orange color down here, which is restricted commercial. And then this little piece of pink stands for neighborhood commercial. Surrounding the property are a variety of land uses. On the east and north side of the center are low-density residential neighborhoods, generally zoned R one A, which is a single-family designation to the south across Thirty-Second Avenue, or a mix of homes and businesses. And then abiding the property on the west is Youngfield, and then beyond that, I seventy. Again, the majority of the parcels in the center are currently zoned PCD, and the proposed zone change and consolidation into a single outline development plan does include all of the properties kind of within that super block from Thirty-Second to Thirty-Eighth, except for one, which is designated right here. This is the Qdoba slash mattress firm building. It is under separate ownership, is currently zoned C one, and is not part of this application. The majority of the pending redevelopment will occur on the southern side of the property, either on property that the center already owns or that they are under purchase, under contract to purchase. And those include property down here at the corner, thirty-two ten Youngfield, the little piece of orange that we talked about just a minute ago, which is at twelve five two five West Thirty-Second Avenue, and potentially twelve seven five five, which is the old Wells Fargo building. So to help give you an idea of what's out there, I think we're all pretty familiar, but I did have some slides I'd like to show. So I'm starting on the north end here. I'm sitting on the north side of Thirty-Eighth Avenue, looking that would be southeast towards the primary access drive from Thirty-Eighth Avenue, which is at this location. In the background, the tan brick building, you can see there is the Walmart building. That's part of a roughly two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-square-foot multi-tenant building. It is pushed back up against the rear property line with an alley that goes along behind it. Let's see, moving down to Youngfield, this is, the property address is thirty-five hundred Youngfield, which is what I call the Qdoba mattress firm building, and it is currently not part of this application. Moving south along Youngfield, this is the entrance drive just to the south of the Qdoba building, looking towards one of the drive aisles. You can see the existing PetSmart building, which is part of that, the Walmart and King Supers structure in the background. To the right out of the picture is the new Wells Fargo Bank Building, and then one of the potential redevelopment areas is located at this, in this location behind the Wells Fargo Building. It's what I call the La Fonda Building, which was a restaurant for many, many years under that name. This, courtesy of Google Maps, is thirty-four ninety Youngfield, is the Wells Fargo Building that was completed in about two thousand and eleven. This I took standing in the interior of the shopping center, looking west towards Youngfield. This is the major entrance drive from Youngfield, and it is a signalized intersection or access point, excuse me. This is another picture courtesy of Google Maps. It is showing the existing Wells Fargo Bank drive-through at thirty-two ninety-eight Youngfield. This is another one of the potential redevelopment sites. This is standing, looking at the intersection of Thirty-Second and Youngfield. I happen to be on the south side of Thirty-Second, looking north. So you can see some of the existing traffic improvements that occurred courtesy of the city CIP project with some federal funding that basically redesigned and rebuilt the intersection of Thirty-Second and Youngfield, also with improvements to the I seventy underpass for Thirty-Second. I'm standing in the, I believe this is the Walgreens parking lot, south side of Thirty-Second. You can see the Chili's Restaurant, which is painted red in color. There were originally two other buildings along this Thirty-Second Avenue's frontage, which were recently demolished. And again, that's one of the potential redevelopment sites. This is the old Wells Fargo Building, currently vacant. This is the major entrance from Thirty-Second Avenue into the center. This is the property at twelve five two five West Thirty-Second Avenue. This is one of the new pieces being incorporated. It's currently zoned restricted commercial. Now I'm standing on the cul-de-sac of Wright Court, looking towards the west, which is what I call the Old Chicago Building, currently vacant, and one of the redevelopment areas as well. And then this is also standing in that cul-de-sac bulb, looking towards, I guess it would be the northeast, and those structures you see in the background are some of the residential development adjacent to the east. So included in your packet is a copy of the proposed outline development plan. It does have two sheets. Typically, an outline development plan is used to establish development guidelines for a particular property. That would include permitted land uses, also development parameters like setbacks, landscape coverage, architecture, those kinds of things. As I indicated previously, the ODP also includes parcels which were either previously purchased or under contract by the owner, Regency Centers, and those include the addresses thirty-two ten Youngfield, twelve seven five five West Thirty-Second, and twelve five two five West Thirty-Second. This this particular document is a little bit different from some of the ones we see. It's a little bit broader in nature because this is such a large site. A lot, some of the development standards are a little bit, they're not quite as pinned down just because of how we've had to deal with the development on the site. But the first thing I'd like to do is talk about uses. The current property, zone C one, as well as planned commercial development. The only guiding document we've got for it really indicates that all C one uses are allowed on the site. And how we've dealt with those, with any sort of drive-through uses, was to require a special use permit in order to allow anything such as a fast-food restaurant or a bank drive-through. With this revised document, we've gone ahead and incorporated all those C one uses and included those that are currently special uses, so we can just deal with those on an administrative level through the specific development plan process. So that would include, again, bank drive-throughs, laundry pickup pickup stations, as well as fast-food restaurants. Instead of having to do another separate special use, we'll be able to approve that administratively or through the specific development plan process. Again, typically, the ODP designates development parameters on the document. Usually, those would include specific references to allowed setbacks. Again, this is a little bit different because it's a planned development. It's recognized in the Architectural and Site Design Manual as being part of the Contemporary Overlay District, so there's a notation when we start to look at setbacks on this front sheet that the reader is supposed to refer back to the Architectural and Site Design Manual, the Contemporary Overlay District, which requires a build-to line of zero to twenty feet. So any new construction that's adjacent to a public street frontage will have to meet that build-to. So that talks about the front setback. There's not any discussion about side setbacks or rear setbacks, and here's why. Although we typically see those on planned developments, this one, again, is a little bit different because it's such a large site. Many of the structures, instead of having parcel lines, have lease lines. And so instead of being able to actually put down a scale and measure out what that setback is, they're based on lease lines. And so instead of trying to get a direct measurement, instead, we look at the overall site that's being redeveloped and how it relates to internal circulation patterns, existing parking, and separation between buildings. One of the development standards that we do address in this ODP document would be lock coverage. We're giving thirty-five percent building coverage on the site, which ends up being about five-hundred-and-twenty-thousand square feet. Fifty-five percent hard surface coverage, which would include built, parking hard surfaces, including sidewalks and those kind of interior connectors. And then finally, a minimum of ten percent landscape coverage. Again, when we sit down to look at a specific portion of the site being redeveloped, we have to sort of extrapolate a little bit, and like I say, instead of having those concrete setbacks that are defined, we look more at the circulation area where the property is going to be located, also with landscaping. General, each of, generally, each of the redevelopment sites will have to meet that ten percent coverage. What we've got a little bit of flexibility, kind of based on where it is located in the shopping center. I would note that the ODP document does require, when we look at a lease area that's being redeveloped, to go back to the zoning code as far as the quantity of materials being allowed, and then again, that that general ten percent landscape coverage. Maximum height within the center will be fifty feet, which is consistent with the C one Zone District regulations. Parking on the site is at a rate of four spaces for a thousand square feet, which again is consistent. If you go back and look in our parking standards, that's what it calls out for shopping centers over a hundred thousand square feet, which this would qualify as. We have added language on the front sheet, I believe it's note number seven, that talks about blanket access throughout the parking drive aisles and other accessways in the site. We also, one condition that I did add was there was no notation added referencing bike parking, so I've made that a condition of approval, that we go ahead and specifically address that, that it follows what's required under the zoning and development code. On sheet one, again, as far as architecture, relating back to the Architectural and Site Design Manual, which dictates facade design transparency, architectural materials and screening. And so architectural materials used would include brick stuck on rock for any new construction. And again, we would be reviewing the architecture specific for any site development portion at the time of specific development plan. The one thing that staff has a little bit of concern about is buffering for adjacent residential uses. As you look at the plan, one of the redevelopment sites is at the very southeast corner of the property, which is adjacent to that single-family neighborhood that we saw in the slide that I took from Wright Court. And in addition to having that adjacency, there are also some grade challenges with about, I believe it's about an eighteen-foot grade change between what I'm calling the Old Chicago Building and Thirty-Second Avenue, that would be to the south. And then on the the eastern side, there's about a fourteen-foot grade change from, again, that that old Chicago building site down to Wright Court. And so we do have specific concerns about buffering. And for that reason, we have recommended language be added to the development plan, allowing us to look specifically at particulars with that SDP, including upgraded vertical landscaping, reduction of lighting, and possible business hour limitations. So that's the first page of the plan. This is the second page of the plan, which, again, is the graphical portion of the ODP. And the intent of this second sheet is to be used to not only reflect existing conditions, but again, to show potential building locations and the circulation and access, and how those relate to the overall site. So if you look at how they've got it laid out, they differentiate between the existing structures and the proposed development areas. The existing structures, as an example, would be this this large multi-tenant building, which contains the Walmart and King Supers, or in towards Thirty-Eighth Avenue. So this time, north is on the left-hand side, with Youngfield on the bottom and Thirty-Second Avenue over on the right-hand side. So showing existing structures in the darker stripe pattern. So we've got this multi-tenant building down here, adjacent to Youngfield is the Qdoba Building. Here, we've got the Wells Fargo Building and so on. It shows the existing access points and circulation and parking areas. The potential redevelopment sites are shown in a lighter pattern, and those would include the the location behind the existing Wells Fargo Bank, the existing drive-through for Wells Fargo, the Thirty-Second and Youngfield hard corner, and then the redevelopment site at the southeast corner, where it's adjacent to the low-density residential neighborhood. We do show the access points that are existing into the parking lot and the drive aisles. And again, these are for illustrative purposes only. Staff is reserving the right to be able to review those, not only the access points to public streets, but also the internal circulation at the time that we are reviewing specific development plans. And again, we have added as a condition on the approval motion, some language that we think is tight enough that it allows us to do that at SDP. So one of one of the other interesting things about the property is there is a strip of land that is located to the northern portion of twelve seven five, or, excuse me, twelve five two five West Thirty-Second, which is the parking lot adjacent to Thirty-Second Avenue. This is a five-foot strip of land that is approximately a hundred-and-fifty-five feet long. It's currently zoned RC, and at first, we thought it had questionable ownership, and because of that, the applicant has not been able to go ahead and try to purchase that separately. And as I indicated, it's sort of like right in the middle of the new redevelopment site on the south end. And because of the strange ownership and the fact that there haven't been any taxes paid for quite some time, City Council has authorized renewal. Wheat Ridge to pursue acquisition of this piece, which then could be conveyed over to the property owner to of this piece, which then could be conveyed over to the property owner to include within the development parcel. Again, it's an unbuildable piece. It's five feet wide by 155 feet long. It's currently zoned RC. And City Council did give the go-ahead, force renewal weirage to go ahead and not only authorize the city to do a city-initiated zoning on it and incorporate it into the site, but to allow acquisition by Urban Renewal. And in order to make everything cohesive, we would add a signature block onto the first page of the development plan for Steve Art, who's the Urban Renewal Manager. Anytime we have a zone change that comes in, we review the application against the criteria that's listed in the zoning code under Section 26-122E. And what that section of the code does is it gives us some evaluation criteria that we look at when we do our analysis and present it to Planning Commission and City Council. Some of the criteria addresses things like mistakes on the zoning map. Another one is whether there's the ability for utilities to provide service to the property. But I think there are two in particular that are the most important, and those are the guiding documents and changing conditions in the area. We have several guiding documents that we look at when we receive a land use proposal, and I'd like to talk about three of the, or actually, four of those. The first one is the Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy. This is a document that was adopted in 2005, and what it did was it established goals for the city of Wheat Ridge to once again become a community of choice with specific objectives, including upgrading and increasing housing stock, being open for business through city processes and procedures, and targeting underutilized properties for redevelopment. The second one is the I-70 Kipling Corridors Urban Renewal Plan. This document was adopted in 2009, and the URA plan was created to assist with redevelopment of properties in defined areas. And one of the defined areas, of course, is the Youngfield I-70 corridor with the intent to help remediate and remove blight. Blight has an interesting definition. If you read it in the state statute, it's not quite what I always thought blight was. It also includes things, not only deteriorating structures, but also ineffective street layout, inadequate utilities, and the deterioration of the site and other improvements. There are several of these blighting factors which do occur in the shopping center. And the plan does identify a unique opportunity with the redevelopment of the site to create a series of destinations that are both region-serving and locally supportive and supports the redevelopment in Applewood Village. The third one is our Economic Development Strategy. This one was adopted in 2010, and it has the broad goal of retaining and increasing retail and revenue-generating activities. Again, the shopping center is the city's largest producer of sales tax revenue and is a primary shopping district, not only for the surrounding neighborhoods, but also has a regional draw. And so, it is important and a key element of the city's economic development strategy. The final document is the city's comprehensive plan envisioned Wheat Ridge. And included on this slide is the location of the shopping center in this location. What those different colors stand for are the different classifications that are assigned to the property, and those include mixed-use commercial, community commercial center, and primary commercial corridors. The focus for mixed-use commercial is on long-term infill and redevelopment, reinvestment, and the need for high-quality urban design and landscaping for vacant or underutilized parcels. And objectives include attracting quality retail development and actively retaining existing retailers, revitalizing key redevelopment areas, and establishing and maintaining a resilient tax base. The Community Commercial Center designation indicates that the city should focus on retaining existing shopping centers and ensuring that these areas remain economically strong. And efforts should include developing regional retail opportunities to draw out of area spending. The final designation, Primary Commercial Corridor, which is attached to Youngfield, this designation indicates that, again, we should focus on retaining the existing commercial corridor businesses along Youngfield and improving the appearance and transportation function in the area. The second criteria that I think is important and relevant is the changed conditions. 32nd Avenue and 38th Avenue are both considered local arterials. 32nd Avenue carries almost 12,000 vehicle trips per day, 38th Avenue about 7,500. Youngfield is also designated an arterial, and more of a commercial arterial, and it carries almost 23,000 vehicle trips per day. I-70, 84,000 vehicle trips per day. So this is a very heavily-traveled corridor, very important to the city. It's also a gateway into the community. Infrastructure. There have been a variety of infrastructure improvements that have occurred in the area. Both the state and the city have invested heavily in the Youngfield Highway 58 improvements. That would include the West 40th Underpass under I-70. And then, more recently, the city just completed a major CIP project, a capital improvement project, for 32nd Avenue corridor at the intersection, and that included street widening from over on the Jefferson County side, from Braun Court over to Wright Court within the city. We widened the lanes underneath I-70. There were new traffic signals put in, left turn lanes installed for all movements within the intersection of 32nd and Youngfield, and construction of an eight-foot-wide multipurpose path that serves not only the schools that are further to the west on Kipling, but also the residential neighborhoods to the east. We've also seen private improvements in the area. These might seem like they're a little bit dated, but to me, they seem like they're pretty current. The first bank building at 32nd and Youngfield, I believe, was completed about eight years ago, and that was a scrape of an old gas station, so a major investment there. We've also seen structure facade improvements occur within the shopping center at the Qdoba Building, and then, of course, the new construction of the Wells Fargo in the shopping center. We've got a major new single-family residential project for 48 lots at 38th and Sims. And then finally, the Clear Creek Crossing development, which is on the western side of I-70. This property has about 190 acres, and we anticipate about a million square feet of commercial development in that area within the next several years. We held a neighborhood meeting on August 5th. We had about 40 folks show up, quite a bit of lively discussion, including comments about drainage, a lot of discussion on traffic, concern about the proposed redevelopment sites and the buffering for the adjacent uses. Probably, traffic was the most prevalent topic. And you've got neighborhood meeting notes and sign-up sheets in your packets. We also put this application out on referral to all the service agencies. All of the agencies did respond back that they can serve the property or can continue serving the property with upgrades for the new redevelopment sites. That would include consolidated mutual water. Wheat Ridge Fire Protection District will assess water supply, hydrant locations, site access, and building layout at the specific development plan. Wheat Ridge Public Works, they've looked at preliminary drainage, and they've also added language regarding future access and traffic information to be reviewed at the time of specific development plan. That was included as a condition in your recommended motion. Northwest Lakewood has indicated they have adequate capacity to serve with upgrades upon redevelopment of the specific sites. And finally, Renewal Wheat Ridge has opined that there is consistency with the Urban Renewal Plan. So, we are giving a recommendation of approval for the primary reasons that the city's guiding documents support the zone change and the redevelopment opportunities. We feel that the zone change will facilitate investment and redevelopment. The evaluation criteria listed in the zoning code supports approval of the request, and that utility agents can serve with improvements at the developer's expense. With conditions, there are four of those relating to, number one, bicycle parking; number two, about buffering at the southeast corner of the site; number three, about language regarding a review of circulation and access; and finally, the condition about adding a signature block for the Economic Development Manager. And that concludes my presentation, and I would entertain questions.
Are there any questions? Commissioner Bucknam?
Sure. Thanks for the presentation, Meredith. One question I have, just off the top, is ownership of the non-included parcel to the extreme southeast portion there.
Okay.
Is that also owned by the applicant and just not included?
So am I, do you see where I have my cursor?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Is that the right location?
Yeah, right there, and actually, also on the other side of Wright Court, that's also zoned NC as well.
Those parcels are under separate ownership. They are not considered part, they're not part of the shopping center, and I believe there's an insurance office, a chiropractic office, and they do function kind of separately from the shopping center.
Okay. Yeah, I just, I did, I wanted to clarify the ownership and inclusion or non-inclusion.
Sure.
So, never mind, you answered that. So when we talk about the, sort of, the next phase after this ODP?
Yes.
The specific development plan. Since a large portion of this was originally designed, you know, back in the '70s, that was way before SDPs were part of the program, right?
Right.
So there's never, like, been an SDP for the whole development?
No, there hasn't. So as new construction would occur, there'd be some change or addition to a building, we kind of deal with it at that time. But we've never looked at the site comprehensively, which is, which is great for us from an administrative standpoint.
Sure. But since it's all being kind of consolidated holistically now, we'd be, when we talk, when we would go to the SDP phase, that would just be SDPs for each specific, like, new build?
Yes.
And not applied to the entire?
Correct.
Okay. All right, that's all I have for now. Thanks.
Commissioner Weaver?
So mine, sort of, is to piggyback on that a bit. I live near this shopping center and use it all the time, and I don't think anyone would be surprised to hear me say it's the most nightmare of a situation to drive in and out of and park. And, you know, I see kids riding their bikes, and, you know, you sort of fear for your life as soon as you get out of your car, because it seems like all of these different businesses, while, you know, wonderfully successful center, parking was sort of planned per each of the businesses. And I was just wondering, at what point, I realize that we can't retroactively change what's there, but, and maybe this might be a question for the next phase for the developers, but will there be a traffic study? Will there be sort of the usability of, I mean, the entrances? This week, I went in every single one of the entrances and was terrified each time because it sort of feels like you're driving through a back alley sometimes, and, I mean, if you live in Wheat Ridge, you experience this because it's our shopping center that we use. So I was just kind of curious, when and if that will be addressed?
Well, I mean, it's a little bit difficult, because if you think about it, most of the development on the north side is existing, and we have dealt with it on an incremental basis. So, again, I think the intent of this document is to take a hard look at saying, okay, we know where we've come, let's see where we're going.
Right.
And to be able to review those specific development opportunities as they come in. Now, having said all that, the applicant is in the process of submitting a traffic, a traffic study for the entire site. And then, of course, as we move through the SDP process, there will be individual site analysis as well. And I believe they've got a traffic engineer here in the audience, so.
Okay.
Might want to address that.
Okay. And then my second question has also to do with that. So as things are redeveloped, is that when the rules for greenery and things will come into effect as far as?
As far as?
Trees being added and?
Yes.
Great. Thank you.
Commissioner Dorsey?
The only question I have is on Youngfield and all of the entrances into this center. There just seems to be many. I utilize the center myself, and some of them are rather dangerous. I think they ought to be closed up somehow. You've got one or two right off of Applebee's there. They're really terrible. Try to make it so it's, I don't know if the developer is looking at that, trying to have, let's say, more limited access to the center, but more constructive, even if there were another traffic signal. I know the new construction they did on the 32nd Avenue, almost really need a light in that entrance off of 32nd so that people can get out of the center there. It's impossible during rush hour to make a left turn on a 32nd out of the center. I've shopped at the center for 34, 35 years, so it's, there's more traffic today, more traffic on 32nd, and, you know, I don't know if the city is thinking about putting a traffic light there or not. I don't know. I mean, it just, or if that's part of the development plan, or for the developers, or, you know, for the owners, or who does that?
Well, generally, it's spurred by the private development, and so that would be the responsibility of them. I know that's part, that particular access point is discussed a lot, and hopefully, their traffic information can help us decide whether it should be required or not. I can say also, in regard to your comment on Youngfield, there's at least seven or eight access points. I don't even think this plan shows all of them. And as properties redevelop, again, staff wants to reserve the right to be able to look at those and say, you know, can they, can we close an access? Can they get access from more of an internal drive aisle? It just makes sense to try to limit those and make them a little bit more definable and not quite so haphazard so you don't have conflicting turning movements. So that's definitely one of the concerns of staff, and that's why we added that language as a condition.
Well, I would say I'd ask the developer, inasmuch as the, most of the development is going to be on that south-southeast corner, which is going to put more traffic on 32nd, that has to be, that particular ingress there needs to be really addressed, the way I look at it, with a traffic signal or something. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Kimzine?
I don't have any questions.
Go ahead.
One more quick question about the, where was it? The buffering along Wright Court there and right to the properties that front Wright Street. When you recommend language be added to the plan, that the development in this area include consideration for upgraded vertical landscaping, do you have any specific, you know, suggestions in terms of upgraded vertical landscaping? I mean, is there something you have in mind, or staff has in mind?
No.
No? We're just going to leave that kind of vague?
Well, as part of the specific development plan approval, they will submit a landscape plan.
Sure.
So we'd like to be able to review it at that time. And, again, our concern is the grade change. the grade change, the adjacent neighborhood.
Yeah. Yeah, so, so the, the process is to leave it a little vague here on the ODP and make it more specific on the SDP?
Correct.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Are there any other questions for staff? Thank you, Ms. Ruckerman. Would the applicant like to make a presentation? If so, please come, come to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Yeah.
There you go. Thank you, Meredith. That makes my job a lot easier, going through all that, so thanks. My name is Eric Chekel. I'm with Regency Centers. Our address is eighty-four eighty East Orchard, Suite sixty-nine hundred. That's in Greenwood Village, eight zero one one one. So also here with me is Dennis Sobieski, he's our civil engineer, Dick Ansteth, he's our architect and land planner, and then Will Damrith, who's our regional officer for Regency Centers here in Denver. So the first slide that I have, and I'm just going to also hand out my slides to you, if that's okay. If you wanted to flip back and look at one that I get past, I could just hand these out to you. So, as I mentioned, I'm with Regency Centers, and Regency is, we're a national company. We own about three hundred and twenty-eight centers throughout the country. We own, we develop, and we operate the centers. So we just don't build them and flip them. We also don't just buy them and operate them. So we also develop the centers too. So, we are, as I said, we're, we're developers of centers. So if we were to develop, to develop the center today, it would be quite a bit different than how it, how it was developed. As you mentioned, this center is quite old. We acquired it in two thousand and five, and since that time, we've been operating it and releasing it and re-tenanting it since that time. We're very proud of the center. It's one of our most visited centers in the state of Colorado, and it's our goal to make it even more vibrant of a center than it is today. That is our, Regency's latest goal ever since the recession, is to really put a lot of money into our existing centers, to try to get them to be ninety-five percent leased or more. Currently, this center is quite a bit, quite a bit below that ninety-five percent leasing level that we, that we strive for, and it's really due to some of the things that were mentioned earlier. Circulation, some of the dilapidated buildings that are out there today, just the pedestrian connectivity, like I said, the vehicular connectivity. So the, the center needs to be improved. And, so that's why we're here today, to talk about this rezoning, is to be able to improve that center, to be able to achieve those items. A little bit more about this slide is that Regency owns a lot of retail centers throughout the country. Almost all of them are anchored by the number-one grocer in the market for those, for those, for those centers. Those include Whole Foods, King Supers or Kroger, Safeway, Trader Joe's, et cetera. So I was going to walk through a little bit. I know Meredith's kind of already done this, but I was going to walk through the center a little bit. Starting on the north end, obviously there's the Walmart and the King Supers. This was part of our original acquisition back in two thousand and five. Most of the, most of the buildings that are here existed in oh-five, and most of the property that we acquired at that time, the buildings were fully functional. Since that time, some of the buildings, we've lost some of the tenants in those buildings. What this map shows, which is our leasing drawing, shows the orange buildings, which are vacant buildings today. You see down here in the, in the southeast corner, this is the old Chicago building that Meredith had mentioned. This is the Wells Fargo building that's there, south of Applejack, and then also the old Holly West La Fonda Restaurant that's here in back of the, in back of the Wells Fargo building. So, also back in two thousand and twelve, we acquired this building here from Jerry Beal. We used to call it the, the hole in the donut. This was the piece of property that we did not own, pretty much in the middle of the center. So in twelve, we, we purchased that, again with the vision that it's our goal to be able to redevelop the center into something that was much better than what it was at that time. Also, since two thousand and twelve or two thousand and thirteen, we acquired this corner, which used to be an old gas station and an old shop building that had a butcher in it and a, and a dry cleaner. We acquired that in, in late thirteen. Early this year, we went ahead and demolished that old gas station, as well as that old shop building that was located here on the corner. If you've been out there recently, it really opens up the center, so you're able to see the value that is here. You're able to see this Chili's building much, much better. You 're able to see this Abruski's Restaurant, and it really gives you an idea of what the potential is for this center. Some property that we own that's currently vacant, as I mentioned, is this space back here. That's why we're talking to Wells Fargo. We have an agreement with them in place, which upon the, they need to go through the SDP process that Meredith was mentioning, and upon them finalizing that SDP process, then they want to put in their, their drive-thru bank facility back here, in back of Building Forty. In, in addition to that agreement with them, we would then acquire this parcel here, which we currently do not own, and then also we would acquire these two little parcels down here that are their old parking lot for this Wells Fargo Building Number Seventeen. So they currently own this piece, and they also own this parking lot down here. Now, we own and we're leasing to them this building seventeen, but with them moving over to here, that lease has since sunsetted, and they're no longer in that building. So that's why it's, it's vacant today. So, that gives you a little bit of history, a little bit of idea what the Wells Fargo moving pieces are. And that's, that's really a big part of this zoning as well, is that right now the zoning does not allow for the drive-throughs on the property, so we would need to go through zoning revision or use by special review to be able to allow that drive-through there. So this zoning revision that we're requesting gives them the right to be able to do that. Okay? Also, this building nineteen through fourteen, which we call the old Chicago building, used to have a gym in it and a radio shack. Right now, it's, it's leased on short-term bases, basis, it seems like, to mostly to political candidates who are looking to, to get the word out. So it'll be vacant again here, I'm sure, in the next couple of days, as those, as those government officials move out of there. As Meredith had mentioned, we do not own this Qdoba, this Qdoba building, and also, as I mentioned, we do not own these two parcels, but it's our goal to hopefully own those next year. So the next slide is, again, as Meredith has mentioned, is the, speaks about the entitlement process. And the reason I wanted to put this up here is just to emphasize the fact that although the ODP doesn't, doesn't give all the details about what these different areas we, we plan for those to develop into, just like we're planning commission this evening, and hopefully we'll be going forward with city council here in the next couple of months for the same ODP, you also will get to see those SDPs with all the detail that, hopefully, all the detail as you can imagine, including traffic and lighting and landscaping and specific layouts for, for all those different areas. The first two that you will see, at least it's planned at this time, the first two that you will see, going back to the site plan, is the Wells Fargo drive-through that I mentioned, as well as the fuel center that we're proposing for this southeast corner. So those two groups are working on their SDP applications right now, with the intention or with the hopes that, that this ODP will pass, so that then they can come in and process their SDPs. Really, some, some of the goals of the, of this ODP for us is that, as I mentioned, the, the property isn't functioning to its best use. It really isn't today. And, and in passing this ODP, it'll give us the opportunity to invest more money, both in soft costs and paper with architects and engineers, to be able to do some redesign of the center, as well as to invest hard dollars in new buildings and new utilities and, and new access points, revising some of the access points, as, as you spoke of, to be able to create a vision for the center, something that we're really unable to do right now until we know what the official process is that we need to go through to be able to accomplish some of the goals that, that us and our tenants and our tenants' customers have for this center. So, again, that's why we're here today. Then, what else? There's other things that, that we can achieve as well with this ODP. Some things that we're talking about is creating a, a master sign program for the, for the property. Right now, if you've noticed, there's some tall tower signs out there, one for Chili's, for Wells Fargo. With this ODP amendment, once, once that gets approved, we'll also then be able to start focusing on ways to fix some of those signs. Maybe make it a consolidated sign, or just figuring out some new wayfinding for the center, some better visibility for those signage, maybe from the highway, also from the local streets, to be able to create a little bit something better for, for our tenants, and again, for the customers that visit the center. I know you talked about difficulty of access. That too, if we have some better wayfinding, if someone wants to go to Walmart, you know, maybe they'll know not to turn in off of Thirty Second, and they'll turn in off of Young Field or off of Thirty-Eighth Avenue. So if we can start creating some signage like that, you know, that, that too would be our goal, to be able to get something approved like that through the city. Also, as I mentioned, we want to be able to create some place find, or some placemaking within the center that's pedestrian, pedestrian-connected, to be able to create some placemaking. Ideally, it'd be nice to add some more restaurants in the center, maybe some sit-down restaurants would al, could always be a potential, some more sit-down restaurants as a potential, with some placemaking. The bike racks, I'm surprised we missed that on the ODP cover sheet, but of course, I mean, that's, that's the kind of thing we want to add to the center, is some more, some, some bike racks. So it's to get some more pedestrians into the center, and that it's comfortable to get from place, place A to B. Right now, I agree, there isn't good pedestrian connectivity, and that's something that we need to create at this center with, you know, different, different methods that we've done with, with our new developments throughout, throughout Colorado. So, I also went ahead and, if, if we need to discuss the, the ODP, I went ahead and I colored up, I had Dick color up Sheet Two, so it's a little bit easier to read than just that black hatching. One thing that I did want to talk about is this blue water quality and detention pond down here. So, if you're familiar with the site, and I'm sure that you are, this old Chicago building, it's a two-story building with a walkout to the east. So there's quite a bit of grade change, not only to the east, but also to the south. And so the parking lots that Wells Fargo owns today, those are quite a bit lower, as Meredith had mentioned. I think she said it was eighteen feet, and then it's fourteen feet to, to this cul-de-sac. So, what we need to and want to be able to do is build this water quality detention facility east of this, of this future SDP area. I think that itself creates significant buffering between what happens up here and from the backyard of these residences. We have looked at different landscaping ideas. We don't disagree that it, that needs to be screened from the properties to the east. That's something that our landscape architects will look at when they're designing that layout of, of that SDP area. So hopefully you will see that here in the next couple of months, is how that, that landscaping lays out. The, the pond today, right now, the center today has some different ponds throughout that achieve a little bit of detention and some water quality. It's our goal to consolidate that into this one location at the southeast corner. And again, I, I believe it's an ideal location to create that buffer between the, the residential to the east. What else? I think really that's it, and I can leave this slide up if you'd like, if we, if there's any questions that you, you have for me.
Thank you for your presentation. Do the commissioners have any questions? Commissioner Bucknam?
Not just yet, no.
Okay. Commissioner Dorsey?
No, I, I don't have a question.
Do you know the approximate square footage of the available retail space?
The available which space?
Retail space. So, I can see the, the yellow designations that are the empty buildings. About how many square feet is that?
Boy, Will, do you know that approximately?
If you know.
If they can see, so the, the units, if twelve through fifteen is about eighteen thousand square feet. Building seventeen, then add another thirty thousand, so that's about forty-eight thousand square feet. Twenty-seven, twenty-eight are about seven thousand, so maybe you're upwards of fifty thousand feet.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. One quick question about the property that is currently that much lower elevation parking lot for the old Wells Fargo area?
Yes.
I noticed that's not marked out as one of the future SDP areas. Is that then going to just remain sort of a low, low point, really low elevation parking lot, or what are, what are your plans for that?
No, the, the thoughts there, and it kind of, it is grayed out.
And we don't, we don't have it marked as future SDP on the ODP, that's why I ask.
Well, it is our intent to include that. If you look on this drawing, it shows that whole thing grayed out, so that is part of that, of that SDP. And with the way that that, that lot builds out, we need to create a little bit larger flat area up top, so that'll extend out to the south a little bit. Then we need to tier down a wall, tier down a wall with some landscaping, and then at the bottom, there'll be a, a good-sized bench with landscaping at the base over by Thirty Second Avenue. There's a new sidewalk there that was built as part of the Thirty Second Avenue widening, so we'll then landscape up to that sidewalk.
Yeah, I mean, I know we're not at the SDP phase on that, but just in context of kind of the ODP here, it sound, it sounds like the, the plan is to, as you say, increase that flat footprint up on the top in order to accommodate a larger, I guess, fuel center for the King Supers, is what you're anticipating?
We've been in discussions with King Supers, yes, about putting in a fuel center at that location. We don't have a finalized agreement with them yet, but they are starting to work on the SDP documents with the hope that, that this rezoning will, will go through. So, yes.
And the SDP area over in the southwest corner there that was originally a fuel station, or the SDP area that's currently the Wells Fargo area, I'm just, I'm trying to, trying to think about the, the impacts on the residences over on Wright Street in terms, as it would relate to, you know, odor and, you know, groundwater runoff and so forth in relation to a fuel center. Is there, did, did any of the tenants express any interest in those farther southwest areas for that fuel center area? Are there some limitations, practical limitations to using those?
There is for those, in that it's back a little bit further, and the visibility isn't as good as the hard corner. Some of, some of the more interest that we have are tenants that are more interested in having that visibility at the hard corner. Also, in discussions with the city... Also, in discussions with the city, there's this design manual that speaks about having buildings at the hard, at the hard corner. And so that's really been our focus, is to be able to, to put something at that hard corner with good masonry that really is an entrance in, into the center. With the proposal for the fuel center at that back corner, some of the advantages for that are the proximity to, to King Supers. It gets those, those people that are using King Supers to be able to then use that fuel center. There's good connection, both vehicular and pedestrian connection to the King Supers with that fuel center location, so that's some of the thought that's gone, that's gone into that.
And of course, any concerns as regards specific environmental impacts would be addressed during that SDP review?
That would be during the SDP review, but I'll also say that there is nothing more important to King Supers than the environmental, than no environmental, environmental impacts from their fuel centers. So you'll hear all that when they come and present for their SDP. I've, I've been to a couple of those presentations with them, because we do a lot of work with King Supers. I've been to a couple of those presentations there. Their group is very, very impressive, both all the way from design through construction and how they develop these, these fuel centers. I think you'll be very impressed.
Okay, thanks.
Do any of the commissioners have any other questions for the applicant or the applicant's consultants? None? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I would now like to open up the citizens forum. Are there any citizens that have signed up to speak? If so, please come to the podium and state your name and address.
I think I should be.
Okay. Is there a, looks like there's a Glenn Winton that signed up?
Sorry. Really, we have the, the app right now.
Yeah, if you have any questions or comments, please come to the podium. If I could get you the...
Donald Winton.
Can you spell your last name, please?
W-I-N-T-O-N.
And your address, Donald?
12590 West 32nd Avenue. We're actually right across the street from where that gas station is being proposed, and right across the street from that entrance on 32nd. A couple more concerns were, was there going to be any language in the plans for, or any consideration for, you know, the homeowners' impact on property values, especially for a gas station? About almost any other store, Starbucks, or something else there wouldn't be bad, but having, you know, that size of a gas station right across the street, you know, with lighting, with the noise, because as of right now, most of those businesses over there aren't open on Sundays, they close at a reasonable time. And so, just the impact on the homeowners over there on 38th across 32nd. Also, was there that entrance, which you guys, a couple of you that brought up? I've been there for eight years now, I've personally seen numerous accidents, some of them actually been in my yard, into my driveway, and that's a result of people turning to the left out of the complex on the 32nd, and also pedestrians, bicyclists hit there. And I know I mentioned in the last meeting, maybe putting a right turn only coming in to that complex and a right turn out, still get traffic through, but, you know, what I'm worried about, and I brought it up last time, is eventually someone's gonna lose their life at that intersection. And I know for firsthand, because I work for the state of Colorado, it's the kind of stuff I deal with. And then, anything else? That was it?
I don't know if staff could, or the applicant can answer that question as far as property values, I think that's hard to determine.
Well, and I will defer, as far as the traffic issues, defer to the applicant, if
We are, as Meredith had mentioned, in the process of doing a, a traffic study for the, for the property. At this time, we don't have, we don't have a plan to put in a traffic signal at that location, the access to 32nd Avenue. Some of the preliminary numbers that we're seeing is that the, the level of service at that intersection is a level of service C, C as in CAT. And with the addition of the fuel center and some, and the other developments, it may go down to a level of service D. And that's all based on the, the wait times at the intersection. Some of the information that, that we've, we've determined from traffic counts that were done earlier in, last week, is that the, the wait times in the morning are 15 seconds to get out, in the afternoon, it's about 20 seconds to get out, and then that's the left turn movement, which is the worst movement, or the slowest movement to get out of the center. So those aren't terrible level of service determinations. Again, as we, as Meredith had mentioned, as we do additional SDPs, we'll also do further analysis on that, on that access point, as well as the other access points throughout the center that are affected by those, by those SDPs. So.
Thank you. Do the commissioners have any other questions?
Yeah, I, I also have a question about the lighting that, that the citizen addressed. Do we have rules, and when would those be in effect at this point or in the next process as far as light coming off? I mean, he makes a good point about it being a different kind of business as far as a fuel center being open 24 hours. Do we have anything that shields, or, you know?
Well, and that's part of the reason we included the condition about being able to talk about reduced lighting levels.
Okay.
We're still having those discussions. Again, with the fuel center, they will be required to submit a photometric plan showing the, you know, the, the level of lighting at the, you know, on the entire site, and especially on the property lines, that's typically where we require zero-foot candles.
So, so the condition addresses his, his concern?
It allows staff the ability to go in and look at that, give it a really good hard look.
Okay. Does that answer your question? Does that, does that address your question? You'd asked if the city was going to deal with it, and it sounds like the condition...
Yeah, just noise, the lighting.
Okay.
That, that gas station.
All right. So, so there, there is, can I speak to this?
Sure.
Am I, there, there is a condition that we're talking about that addresses the lighting that you asked about in, in what we're discussing here, so, okay.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? Seeing none, I will close the public forum. At this point, I would entertain a motion.
I move to recommend approval of case number WZ-14-09, a request for a zone change from commercial one, restrict, restricted commercial and neighborhood commercial to planned commercial development, PCD zoning, and an outline, and an outline development plan, ODP, on property located in the Applewood Village Shopping Center, addressed generally as 3400 Young Field Street, for the following reasons. Number one, the proposal is consistent with the city's guiding documents, including the Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy, Envision Wheat Ridge, and the I-70 Kipling Urban Renewal Plan. The new zoning and ODP will facilitate, number two, the new zoning and ODP will facilitate redevelopment of certain areas in the Applewood Shopping Center. Number three, the proposal meets the zone change criteria, and number four, all requirements for an outline development plan have been met, with the following conditions. Number one, a note be added that bicycle parking should be consistent with section 26-501.E.4 of the Zoning and Development Code. Number two, language be added to the plan that development in the southeast corner of the area include consideration for upgraded vertical landscaping, reduction of lighting at night, and hours of operation limitations. Number three, public works recommended language that be included on sheet two of the ODP document. And number four, a signature block for the Economic Development Manager must be included on the face of the ODP document as the city will be cooperating, be a cooperating property owner.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, call for vote.
Motion approved, five to zero.
Let's move on to our next case. Do you need a moment, Meredith? I open the public hearing for case number WPA-14-01, a resolution adopting the Three Mile Plan as amendment to the City of Wheat Ridge Comprehensive Plan, and ask for the staff report.
I actually went to, I don't have much of a presentation, so I'll do it from here.
Okay.
So, for those of you who have been on planning commission for a while, you probably...
All right, is that better? Hello, hello?
Okay. Have, are familiar with what we call the Three Mile Plan, and the Three Mile Plan is a document that we are dictated by state law when we, when cities have the opportunity to annex land. So every year, we have to come in and renew the plan. Generally, the way the rules work is that the annexation can't extend a municipal boundary more than three miles in any given year, and that if we do have annexation opportunities, they should be noted on the plan. It is required to be updated annually, it does not propose, assume, or guarantee any property will be annexed, but serves as a starting point for future analysis if land is to be considered for annexation. And if we did have a proposal that, that came in, of course, we would have an annexation impact analysis submitted as part of the application, and then basically, there's no changes from last year. So, like I say, if you look through the document, it, it, it hasn't changed much. Primarily, the area that would be open for annexation because of the way the city is landlocked on certain portions is we have a, a few opportunities, both on the north and south, but primarily the area to the west, which is, you know, continuing in the, at what we call the, the Clear Creek Valley area, is the area that if we were to do any sort of annexations, that's the, the best likelihood that that's where it would occur. And I guess if you have any questions, I'll try to answer those. But that would basically conclude staff comment.
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
No questions.
Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. I move to approve Planning Commission Resolution Number 2014-03, a resolution adopting the Three Mile Plan as an amendment to the City of Wheat Ridge Comprehensive Plan.
Can I get a second?
I'll second, David.
Any discussion? Call for a vote.
Approved, five to zero.
Thank you. Are there any other items for tonight?
Nothing formal, although you're probably aware of the, the outcome of the election and the fact that both of the sales tax, well, the sales tax increment question and then the 38th Avenue with determination, both were defeated. At this point, we're not sure how we'll, how we'll proceed, we need to kind of regroup and it sort of changes our work, our work tasks for the next year, because we don't have a street to design, but we got, we've also got some ideas about alternative treatment of 38th Avenue to see if we can, you know, make improvements, but to a less, to a lesser expense, so hopefully we'll have an update.
We have more cases next, uh, next meeting on the 20th, and then on December 4th, is that the right date, Kim?
We've got, we've got a study session with the city attorney, so.
Questions?
So we do, we do have, on the 20th?
We, we have cases on, on November 20th, okay? And then on December 4th is the study session with, with Jerry Dahl. It, it will be a dinner meeting, starting at six, hopefully to give us a little bit more time. It seems like we, we had a hard time coming up with the date, number one, and then, you know, in the past, we've tried to do them before a regular meeting, and that just doesn't give us enough time. So we're gonna devote the entire night to planning commission, but I don't think it'll be passed. If we start at six, it wouldn't be too late, so. We have questions that we know have been brought up over the past year, things about urban renewal and those kinds of powers, also just, especially for the new folks, you know, kind of meeting protocol, that's kind of the standard thing we go over, talking about, you know, what's appropriate, what's not appropriate, so on and so forth, so how to make motions, things like that.
Any other questions? I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
I have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Any second? Call for a vote. She did the second.